Hi, good evening, welcome, thank you for coming tonight. I'm Betsy Seacard, I'm the Assistant Town Clerk. I have confirmation from the town election workers that we do have a forum for this evening's meeting. I do call the meeting to order at 7:04. The town of Irving constables, town clerk, and administrative assistant in the name of the Commonwealth, you are directed to notify and warrant the said inhabitants qualified to vote in town affairs to meet on the grounds of the Irving Elementary School located at 28 Northfield Road, Irving, Massachusetts, on Wednesday, January 31st, 2024, at 7:00 PM. The qualified inhabitants will meet then and there to vote on the Articles 1 to 9 on tonight's warrant. Oh, I'm sorry. In addition, you are hereby directed to serve the above warrant and to post the attested copies as directed by vote of the town at least 14 days before said meeting. Fail not and make due return of this warrant with your doings thereon, the town clerk, for the day of said meeting, given under the hands of the Irving Select Board on the 11th day of January 2024. An Irving constable has served the above warrant by posting and attested copies as directed by vote of the town at least 14 days before the time of holding said meeting. So as you can see, we do not have a town moderator this evening, so I would like to open the floor for anyone who's willing to be nominated for, to be the town moderator this evening. Anybody willing? Do we have any nominations?
I'm going to nominate Jackie Lloyd. I'll read it back to you.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Jackie will be our moderator this evening. We'll vote, oh, we need a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We have a unanimous vote? Thanks, Jackie. Good evening, I'd like us all to stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So I've never done this, so pardon me if I make some mistakes. So we are going to do Article 1. Oh, before I do that little thing, if you're going to talk, the microphone is up here, this is being televised, so please stand up and be patient and wait for me to call on you. A few other housekeepings, because I know there's a contentious article on here, please be polite to each other, please don't call out from the audience. If you have a question, please go to the mic. Article 1, Acceptance of the Relocation of Bridge Street. To see if the town will vote to accept the relocation of Bridge Street as a public way by the following descriptions. Bridge Street, Irving, Mass., West Side, beginning at a set concrete bound on the south line of Route 2, a 1929 Massachusetts State Highway alteration, said concrete bound being 16.42 feet easterly of a point opposite station, 130 plus 50.57, thence, south, 02 degrees, 44, I'm not sure how to read that, so, minutes? Thank you. Yep?
If I may? I'll just make a motion and we'll have the one as written.
Thank you.
I'm going to save the all.
Thank you. Okay. All right. In all your booklets down there, there's an informational on what the article's about. Oh, this is submitted by the Select Board and the Finance Committee recommends approval. This article provides for the official acceptance of the relocation of Bridge Street as a public way in the town of Irving. Approval of this article will allow the town to formally record this action with the Franklin County Registry of Deeds. Approval of this article requires a majority vote. So I'm not sitting in the audience, so somebody else is going to have to move the rest of them, second them. Is there any discussion on this article? Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes with the majority. Oh, it's unanimous. I don't have any notes here. Okay, Article 2, Authorization of Property Taken for Highway Purposes. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to take by enament domain for highway purposes, again, you guys are challenging me, from Renata Piacava, from the following described land. You can read it in there if somebody just makes a motion as printed, I deeply appreciate it. Okay, this information, is approval of this article will authorize the Select Board to acquire by enament domain through a friendly taking that has been discussed with the landowner, the described land to be incorporated into the public way layout of Maple Avenue, as described in Article 3 of this warrant. Pursuant to the provisions of Massachusetts General Law and upon such terms and conditions as the Select Board deemed to be in the best interest of the town, approval of this article requires two-thirds vote. Are there any questions?
Why are we using eminent domain if the landlord is going to property land?
That is, that is the method that the town has, it sounds like it's not friendly, but that's why we advised it was in collaboration with the property owner, because it's helpful for both.
But that is the method that a town can take property.
Is the land over here?
I don't believe they were able to be here this evening.
Just so the town doesn't have to go to an extraordinary expense of a title search and to get clear title to the property, a friendly eminent domain taking does that, accomplishes that, clears the title, in case there's any back 100-year-old problems, and as have people who buy property in our rural towns know, lots of times, there's property problems with the descriptions of the property, that kind of thing, so it just easily resolves those kind of things.
Any further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes unanimously. Article 3, Acceptance of the Relocation of Maple Avenue. To see if the town will vote to accept the relocation of Maple Avenue as a public way by the following description.
Make a motion to approve Article 4 as, or as printed.
This article provides for the official acceptance of the relocation of Maple Avenue as a public way in the town of Irving. This action also involves a friendly taking of land that will provide for the parcel with the necessary road frontage to access two privately owned parcels, as well as use a portion of the town-owned parcel. Approval of this article will allow the town to formally record this action with the Franklin County Registry of Deeds. Approval of this article requires a majority vote. Are there any questions? None being, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes unanimously. Article 4, Amend the Fiscal Year 24 Elected Officials' Compensation. To see if the town will vote to amend the fiscal year 2024 elected official compensation as is detailed in the table below, approved in Article 6 of the May 10th, 2023 Annual Town Meeting, by the addition of $14,515.80 for the fixed sum of $176,828.30, and vote that the following salary and compensation be paid from this sum to the following elected officials of the town as provided in Section 108, Chapter 41 of the General Laws as amended, or take any other action relative thereto.
Make a motion to accept Article 4 as printed.
This article outlines the compensation amounts for elected officials. This proposed change for the town clerk, tax collector, and treasurer salaries is related to the revised compensation scheduled for the fiscal 2024, and the funding will be sourced from the existing special article that was approved at the annual town meeting, and does not require a change to the current tax levy limit. Approval of this article requires two-thirds of a vote. Again, I will reiterate, if you have a question, you can raise your hand, or you can go up to the mic, and then I will call on you. That's the way it's supposed to work. No offense, I've been told there's a proposed amendment.
Can I make amendment?
Yes.
I make a motion that we amend Article 4 as follows. In the opening text, change the $14,863.40 to 1, 14,800, I'm sorry, that is the amendment, let me, let me restart that. Make an amendment to Article 4, changing the language referencing the total sum of $14,515.80, and change that amount to $14,863.40, and then change the total sum from $176,828.30 And then, on the tax collector line in the table, change the amount under proposed amendment column of $1,0778.40 to $2,126 even, following that down to the total salary under the amended wage total column, changing $22,108.40 to $22,456 even, and finally, at the bottom, changing the total elected official salary number to the $177,175.90.
Is there a second on the motion to amend? Can you please explain the amendment? Oh, right, yeah, I did that right?
Yep, I can. There was an error in the calculation of the proposed amended salary line for the tax collector, and so this is just the math correction for that error.
Is there any further questions related to the amended, the motion to amend? None being, all those in favor to amend the article, signal, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
Any abstentions? The motion carries by a majority.
Two, two-thirds.
It requires two-thirds? Okay. Oh, no, amendments, okay.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
Okay, put me on the spot, and, okay, go right ahead, now you're all, now he got it.
I'm sorry, I came in a few minutes late, so I didn't hear your direction earlier. So I actually have two questions. I'm curious why this is being brought up now, when it was voted on a few months ago, and it did not win at that time? The vote, the majority didn't win that vote? So I'm curious why we're doing it now, just a few months later, versus bringing it up in a few months, say at the next annual town meeting, given the fact that it lost in October? My first question. Second question is, can I request a paper ballot, please?
So can we deal with the first question first, and then we'll go on to the second one, because that requires a vote?
So, so we, so there was feedback from the community following that vote at that meeting, that there was some confusion on whether or not this change in elected official compensation was tied to the override, or that the funding came from the override. And so, having heard that, and understanding there was some confusion, and given that it is related to the current fiscal year, rather than the next fiscal year, where generally is what our annual will speak to, we chose to bring it back. And to be clear about that, it speaks to it briefly in the article information, the funding for this change was part of the group funding that was voted at annual town meeting by everyone to make adjustments to compensation for all town employees. All of the other compensation adjustments have been put into place. These can't be enacted until the voters set the compensation, because they're elected officials, so that is why it has to be done here, otherwise, it would have already been in effect, as all other town employees are. And it does not raise the taxes that's already been incorporated in the budget for fiscal 24.
Thank you.
Quick follow-up question to what you said about, you had feedback that people were confused on what they were voting on. How did you collect that feedback?
Could you clarify what, could you clarify what you mean by collect it?
How did you get that feedback? How did you make a representative assessment that so many people were so confused, that A) would have overturned the ballot question, or that enough of us were misinformed? Or was it like three people came up and said, I didn't realize that?
I personally heard from a few, I was told, conveyed through various town employees and other community members, that they heard that from other members, as well as I've heard it from my fellow board members up here. So we made the collective decision to bring the article back, just to ensure there was the opportunity with the public having the full, clear information to make a decision. I don't recall the exact vote, but I do believe it wasn't, it was pretty close, maybe I'm wrong, either way, we made the decision to bring it back.
So otherwise, no survey inside through town, sorry, no publication, the rabid town saying, if you're misinformed, let us know, we're concerned about this, we want to make sure people's votes are heard accurately, nothing like that, just, we heard some rumors that people felt they were misinformed, and so you voted on, put in the ballot yet?
Yes, we heard some directly and some indirectly, and we, I believe that we should treat all of our employees equally and fairly, and the adjustments were made in that method, they can't be implemented because of state law, and that's why this article exists on the warrant. Otherwise, as I said, it would be ineffective.
Jake, I believe the legal counsel wants to talk.
Yeah, I just want to be clear, so everybody understands, this money was appropriated in the annual budget, but in order to pay elected officials, you also have to approve their salaries by this article as well, so it's a two-step process. One step of the process has already been done, put into the tax rate, and settled. It's the approval of these salaries that is the second step that wasn't approved at the meeting. So, just so everybody's clear exactly what this vote is and how it affects the salaries.
Mr. Blatchley, can you come up to the mic, please?
So if I understand correctly, this was not part of the two-and-a-half override?
Correct.
And we, it was, it was voted down during that meeting, it voted down the two-and-a-half, but it was not part of the two-and-a-half override question?
Correct.
They don't go back.
Correct.
So again, just to clarify, we're, we just set up with different grades, so different job titles are put into different grades, correct, on the salary schedule? And so, are there other town employees in the same grade as these people that we are voting on tonight? Brian, Jake, you said yes, you are.
Yes, exactly, it's the same, probably, but yes.
Yeah, and so those people have already gotten their raises, correct?
Yes.
Because they were not elected officials, so they just automatically got them.
Retroactive to July 1st, yes.
And whether I feel like they deserved them, or are doing a good job, now is not the time to be bringing that up, right? Because this is more of a procedural, they're elected, so they have to be kind of pulled aside and done in a different way, right? So if I don't like them doing their job, or I don't think that that's the correct amount of money, there are other ways for me to express that to you, or should have expressed that to you earlier than right now, right? Because those other people already got their raises, and we're not discussing whether they should get them or not get them, correct?
I would agree with that.
Okay.
What I would say is if anybody in this town feels that a particular elected official is not doing their job appropriately or properly, the method of voicing your opinion is to vote them out of office when they are up for reelection. If I can try to share how I look at what this article is about, is if, I would imagine, my employer said, we've approved an amount of money to make sure that we are recruiting and retaining the best possible candidates for our jobs. We've approved that money for a purpose, and we are going to give everybody in the company a raise, except for you, Mr. Loind, because you were hired under different circumstances. That's how I look at what this article is about, that we treat all of our non-bargaining unit employees fairly and equitably, that the raises non-bargaining unit members, full-time people got, will be the same for the elected officials that are listed here tonight.
And if I could just, so, and just again, to clarify, this wage study was done, and a certain percentage was decided that wages need to go up, and certain decisions were made about the salary schedule, how it's going to be, five steps were dropped from the bottom, right, to make us competitive. So everyone else on that wage salary, that wage schedule, has benefited from that, and has already seen that increase in their paychecks, except for three people who happen to not, because they're elected. And that is solely the difference between these three people and everyone else on that salary schedule, right?
Yes, and the voters chose to not approve it last time.
Is there anybody else that wishes to speak?
David Finn, Fourmore Street. I would like to question the position, not the person. Why Irving needs a tax collector, or, no, sorry, treasurer, apologize. For the population we have in our town, for the hours that position requires, the advertised salary for this position, the treasurer's position, is higher than any other town in Franklin County. Could you explain how you came up with that number?
We have, you want?
Yeah, I was going to speak to that. So, when we do the wage study, and when we were looking at them, we tried to look at a cross-section of all departments, all positions, and did the best of our ability to say, are we competitive? We don't have individual tables for each position, we have a table for general government, for town employees. So we have one table that everybody falls on, either in some grade or some step, somewhere on that table. So we didn't look at each position and say, this position needs to be at this rate, this position needs to be at that rate, this position needs to be at this rate. We looked at where are, and we looked at all of them, we looked at fire, we looked at police, even though we had to go into negotiations for some of those, we wanted to see where we were, are we competitive? We looked at highway. Anything that fell under our table, we were looking at it, saying, where do we fall for comparative descriptors for job-specific responsibilities? I will get into some of your question a little bit about why I feel confident that this is actually an appropriate rate, even though it's not set for a person. Sure, there might be positions that we have in town that benefited greatly, and we might think, eh. We will look at the job description and the job placement for some of those, of where they fall on the table. We didn't feel that this would need to be moved on the table. So we didn't give the, these three people, specific raises to this dollar amount, we adjusted the table at one time, using a methodology that sort of, we figured we were around 10% lower than some of our compadres overall, throughout the county, and throughout neighboring communities that have like job descriptors. If you look at some of the FERCOG study, absolutely, you'll find towns that will pay a treasurer less. But they also aren't a procurement officer, they also don't do their own payroll, they also don't have a $15 million budget with somewhere like 100, or 70 employees or something. A lot of these towns of similar size and similar residents are working with around a third of a budget, maybe half of a budget that we have, not nearly as many employees that we have, they don't have to run all the grants through their office, none of that stuff is happening. The workload, and we've said this many times, the workload that our employees do, and I'm saying all of them, every employee in here, acts more like a small city than it does a quaint little community in some of these Franklin County towns that don't deal with the voracious, you know, type of budget that we go after, and the things we try and do, and the projects we're running, they're just not dealing with them. So you're comparing apples to oranges, they're not the same. The title might be the same, but they're not the same. I could say chief of police is the same, you know, all chiefs are the same, but somebody would look at me and say, do you think that Springfield is the same as Greenfield, is the same as Irving, is the same as, you know, Hatfield? They're not all the same, they all have the same title, they're not the same. Same with fire, same with, you know, a principal of a school, they're, they're all a little bit different, they all do a little bit different things. I feel that the placement of where that grade and step is on there is appropriate, based on the workload that this position does. They were already in that grade, so we did not make any effort to adjust the grade of where they were. They just got the movement like every other staff member did in the town. I hope that gives some clarity about how we came to that decision.
It gives, gives me some clarity, but that's a large increase in pay for the treasurer's position, to go from $63,000 to almost $73,000. It's a lot of money for the taxpayers to cover.
Yes, Jake.
I would just like to add that when we talk about the amount of money flowing through and things like that, you know, we're looking at annual operating funds, in and out, et cetera, you know, estimated revenues for the coming year of over 14 million, and current balances, most of these from June of last year, not even what they are today, in stabilization in our other post-employment benefits accounts that we have to keep, wastewater water, all those different funds and such, are just shy of $18 million. So you're talking about, you know, 20, $35 million plus that, that we're, you know, managing and investing in the savings accounts to earn interest, and all of these various things that are happening. So it's not, on the surface, as comparable as it may seem to a community that has a similar population, or a similar square footage, because we have the luxury of operating at a much higher level, we do a lot more things, we keep our community, and our equipment, and our buildings, and et cetera, we try to keep them in good repair, and keep a high level of services for our community that our neighbors don't get to enjoy, unfortunately. And I'd also like to say that, while I understand the point about it's a large amount, across the table, and when we look at a variety of positions, and a variety of grades, and a variety of steps, there are those that are at or above, you know, 10,000 in the adjusted amounts. So it's not outside of the range of what the adjustments were for the variety of other employees. And the last thing I'd like to say is, getting back to a question about the process, that this is a different process, because the people who are managing these offices, and keeping office hours, and doing the day-to-day work are also elected officials, unlike the rest of, you know, most of our part and full-time employees. They are, this discussion, for me personally, sounds like we're judging their performance of the three- of the three, or, or one, or however many of the, of the elected officials' comp change that may disagree or agree with. But the other 70, 60, 70 employees did not go through that process to determine whether or not they received the adjustments made that were consistent across the board. That decision was made at the annual town meeting when the voters said, "Yes, we'll put away money to pay them more." And so that, to me, the decision was made then, because it wasn't individual reviews. It was an overall market adjustment to stay competitive in the employment and inflation environment that we are all in. You see it around us, it is very challenging.
Does anybody else want to speak or ask a question?
Jackie, may I?
Well, after this one.
My question is, how many hours is that position worth? Oh, bickering, about 30? Am I right or am I wrong? 30, okay. And if it's such a big deal to pay out salaries, hire a company to do that, if that's such a burden, because other towns pay, have, have other people do that. This doesn't seem like a big deal. Companies do it every day. If it's a big, you know, if it's gonna cost, if it's a big argument among the taxpayers, there are other remedies besides what we keep hearing.
There are other remedies, and I could state firmly from the company that I work for, that it would cost us far more than the 10 grand a year.
You think?
Do I think?
Yeah.
I know.
Okay.
Sir, you can go ahead up, and, but Jim, did you have a, did you want to add something?
The, the comment I wanted to make about comparing apples to apples, one of our neighboring communities, they have a treasurer, but that town, their payroll is divided into separate fire districts that the treasurer doesn't handle. Their school district and all the teachers and paras and support staff are paid, that payroll is handled by the school district, not by the treasurer's office. That's why it's not apples to apples. Our treasurer's office in handling that payroll handles all payroll, every town employee.
Okay. Ed Ross, a little bit of North Street here in Irving. And I just think it's time that the town started to get a little more fiscally responsible. Every year our taxes go up 200, 300 to $500 a year. My pay doesn't go up that much every year. And, you know, it's time you started living in your budget and thinking a little carefully about it. Now, I have nothing against this person, don't even know her, but it does seem like it's a large raise for a 30-hour-a-week position. And it just doesn't seem right in any way. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? So there has been a request for a paper ballot. I call for a vote, right? Oh, so I'll need a second if you want a paper ballot, so we can entertain the motions. We are entertaining it. It would be a hand count, so there'll be a little break after you vote. We do not have the machine here tonight. So if you want a paper ballot for this question, please say aye. If you don't want a paper ballot, please say no. I can't tell, we're gonna have to count. So all those that want a paper ballot, please stand. And keep standing till we set you down. Okay, you can be seated. There were, okay, all those that do not want a paper ballot, please stand. Everybody can be seated. So the motion fails 20, 27 to 40, or 41, yeah, 27 to 41. So it will be a voice vote, and chances are you'll probably have to stand for it. All right. Oh, yes, Mark.
I am on the school committee. One of the things I do each, every two weeks, is I go into the school and I take this bulky folder and I go through every single payment that is supposed to be made for pencils, for paper, for erasers, for, and big ones too, the salaries and all of that stuff. And they have to get signed off and sent to the treasurer because she has to write a check to each of those companies for everything that got spent or obligated that week. And it just is a huge amount of stuff. I don't want to minimize the work that she has to do in entering and checking and making sure those are accurate and getting them in the right category and then paying out the bills so that we're up to date with the vendors that service our school.
This is the last opportunity to speak for or against the motion. Is there anyone else? Leslie? Uh, yes. But I already warned everybody, they were probably gonna have to stand. Okay. None further. If you're in favor of the motion to pass Article 4 as amended, please signify by, signify by saying aye. All those opposed signify by saying no. Okay, all of you that said yes, please stand. And don't sit down until we ask you to, please. Okay, you may sit down. All those that don't want the article to pass, please stand. You can sit down, I'm so sorry. Never again will I be impatient with Dick and Rich when they're doing that. It's very nerve-wracking. All right, there were 45 yeses, 24 nos, which is a total of 69 votes, but it did not pass because that was .6521, and it needed to be .66. So the motion did not pass. Article 5, appropriation to the opioid settlement stabilization fund, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $22,716.85 from free cash into the opioid settlement stabilization fund or take any other action relative thereto. It's submitted by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee recommends approval. The approval of this article will transfer the sum of $22,716.85 into settlement funds that the town received for fiscal year 2023 into the newly established fund that was approved at the May 10, 2023 town meeting. The previous vote had authorized this transfer, but the Department of Revenue has asked that this vote be taken again. This approval does not address the expenditure of funds which requires town meeting approval. Approval of this article requires a majority vote. Are there any, are there any questions? None being, all in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say no. Any abstentions? The motion passes with a majority. All right, I'm going to read Article 6 as amended, to see if the town will vote to close the special article appropriations listed below and appropriate the unspent balances in the aggregated sum of $390,376.57 into the capital stabilization fund or then take any other action relative thereto. Nothing in the list changed, except the bottom number, which was the total, which ended up being 390376.57. It is submitted by the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee recommends approval, and the Capital Planning Board recommends approval. Five, aye, and, yeah, they recommended, okay. Any discussion? Any questions?
Dan Watson. The $149,000 for the feasibility study for the town hall, can someone explain that? What that is? I know what a feasibility study is. Why is it so much?
The, the money in there was to perform a feasibility study, which has not been done yet, so we're moving the money back into the capital stabilization account because we don't have the, we have a lot of other priority projects that have to come ahead of that right now, and given the funding situation, because of the floor amendments and changes made at annual town meeting that depleted the capital, raise and appropriate funding, we won't have the ability to do the, the kind of projects and improvements we've done historically. So we're putting this back into the savings because we can't afford to.
Is that normally that much for a feasibility study?
It varies on what is being performed, and it would have gone out for a, out to bid to get proposals for the feasibility, and then we would have awarded. It doesn't mean it would have cost that much.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? None being, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The article passes unanimously. Article 7, appropriation for a modular office space for public works, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $75,000 and no cents from account number 001-429-900-42912-578000 for the Public Works Dry Storage Project for the purchase, installation, and related costs of modular office work on Public Works Boulevard or take any action relative thereto. Submitted by the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee recommends approval, and the Capital Planning Committee recommends approval. This article will vote to appropriate $75,000 for the purchase of a modular office space for the Public Works staff, with the knowledge that the request for a new Public Works office and dry storage garage facility is several years out from being funded, finding appropriate interim office space for the department needs to be prioritized. This proposal will allow the town to purchase the necessary space for the foreseeable future and the proposed funding sources related for this purpose. Approval of this article requires a majority vote. Any questions? Oh, sorry, I got ahead myself, sorry. Now you can speak. Now you can speak.
Dayton, Moore Street. What has changed with the highway part of the Dandyian offices now? Have they, are they grow out of the offices they've been in? The building's been there since the 70s, and they've been using the offices in that building since then. What has changed?
So a few different things. There is not actual office space in that building for them. The spaces they were using were probably by newer regulations, but in general are unsafe because they're in proximity to high-voltage MCC panels and such things, which is not allowed by OSHA and other electrical safety codes. So they had to be moved out of there, and that was multiple years ago. So they have occupied a town hall, the senior community center, and been moving around as needed ever since. And we had a project to look at a dry storage and potentially a highway building at that site. We did some work on that, but obviously we're not in a financial position right now to bring that forward, so they don't have a space, and that would have been their space. So that's why we have, we have to find a solution that is more permanent than floating around. And there isn't space in some of the areas that they are working in. We have other employees who are supposed to be in those spaces. Did you want to add to that?
Yeah, I just wanted to add one more thing, is when we were looking at the potential for doing a new highway building, one of the proposals was, why would we build a new building? You should just go out and get modulars. It's cheaper and they'll last many years. We heard the constituents say that, and we realized that it was gonna be financially unfeasible to go out and build the building the way it was designed and accommodate for, you know, a 25 to 50-year growth pattern. This is the alternative. This was one of the recommendations that people had come up with, saying modular buildings are fairly inexpensive and you can get quite a few number of years out of them while you figure out what you're gonna do for a more permanent solution. So this was at the request of actual residents in town that thought this was a, could be a viable solution. That was back when we first started talking about it, and the price tag ballooned quite substantially for the other building, so we decided to put that to rest and deal with some other financial responsibilities.
Hi, my name is Paula Betters, and I am the Director of the Senior Center, and I have to tell you that Glenn has been in a very square little footage for four years. He sits amongst all the people that come in. We constantly have interruptions if he has anything to do with the cemetery. All the stuff is laid out right there. There's no space for anything, and it would be ridiculous to think that he's gonna continue that way. So, seriously, I would consider the $75,000 well-spent because I have a girl that's come to work for a planner, and she has not even been able to sit in her seat because that is the space that Glenn takes up. We love him there, but we're ready to get rid of him. Okay? So I'd vote for this, please.
Are there any more questions? Go ahead, Mariah.
Hi, I'm Mariah Kurtz, I'm the Town Planner. I've also been the Chair of the DPW Feasibility Committee, and this is a really great, a great project to do right now, a great purchase that we absolutely need to do for our employees. I also don't want you all to come back in a handful of years and think that this is the only thing that you need to do for those employees. We need a dry storage building with office space, long-term. That's non-negotiable. Right now, we've made a financial choice that that's not going to happen in the next few years, and that immediately we do need office space. So I just want you all to be aware that while, while we need to make this purchase right now, there will be a future request to build a proper dry storage building with proper offices for our DPW staff.
Please come to the microphone.
Jackie, while they walk up, I'm just gonna make one comment, just in case people don't know the line item. I had to ask, I wasn't sure what the balance was. That line item has a balance of $159,284. That money that was already appropriated at a town meeting for the purpose of renovations or a new building, so this is not new funds. These funds are sitting in an account for something to do with public works and buildings related to public works. So that was all part of that study. It'd be drawing off the funds that are already there. So just want to be clear about that. This is not a new raise and appropriation.
So just out of curiosity, what happens to those modulars, like, after we build the building? Just wondering, do you, like, sell them to other people? Yeah, okay, just curious. Thank you.
Yeah, they could be resold, you know, assuming there, and there's a market, obviously. We see them all the time. We recommended this amount because it's a purchase rather than a lease or a rental, which over, you know, three to five years would cost us well more, and we don't see how we would have a building any sooner than that at the best. So this is most cost-effective, long-term.
Thanks.
Are there any more questions? None being, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Any abstentions? The article passes by a majority. Article 8, appropriation for boarding, securing, and security of town properties. To see if the town will vote to close the special article appropriations listed below and appropriate the unspent balances in the aggregated sum of $12,712.83 into a new account to be created for the boarding, security, securing, and security of town-owned properties or take any other action relative thereto. Approval of this article proposes to aggregate the remaining balances of the special articles for the former IP mill and the former Usher mill sites into a single article to be used to continue to maintain and secure these sites and other town properties. Approval of this article requires a majority vote. Are there any questions?
Can someone tell me what the mothball planning is? Mothball and planning for $10,000?
That was funding that was appropriated many years ago related to the Usher building that's at the Riverfront Park still, and some of the, you know, temporary, if you will, securing and safety things we had to do to make it, you know, safe to be adjacent to the park and during all that project, like the fencing and other things. So it's kind of similar vein as security and boarding and all of that, so we're just trying to consolidate the various articles that exist that purpose is to help us maintain security and safety at buildings and properties that are not, that we don't have the funds to do something different with right now.
But what are the mothballs for?
It's an account name. I could look up, we could look up the original article and get back to you on why it was named that way then, but it's just an account name. It's meant in a general sense, not a specific, we're buying mothballs. I don't think we ever bought any for that.
Are there any other questions? None being, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The article passes by a majority. Article 9, authorization to sign the five-year contract for the school transportation services. To see if the town will vote to authorize the school committee to enter into a five-year contract commencing on July 1, 2024 with FM Kozmeskis to provide school transportation services for the town, subject to the school committee's determination that the contract is in the best interest of the town and subject annually to town meeting approval for funding for these services and/or take any other vote or votes in relation thereto. It's submitted by the school committee, the finance, the select board recommends approval, and the finance committee recommends approval.
Motion to approve Article 9 as written. Second?
Approval of this article would authorize the school committee to sign a five-year contract with FM Kozmeskis for the provision of school transportation services for the students in Irving. Approval of this article requires a majority vote. Any questions? None appearing, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The article passes unanimously. I will take a motion to dissolve. Or dissolve? Just dissolve, dissolve, not adjourn, dissolve.
Make a motion to dissolve the meeting.
All those in favor of dissolving the meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Any no's? This meeting is dissolved.